December 3rd to order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that the emergency exits are the doors that you came in on the side or the doors at either end of the hall behind us. So this time, I'd like to just review the meeting minutes for September 2024 and vote to adopt them.
Mr. Chairman, before you guys vote on anything, I just want to remind the board that you have a quorum, three out of five, so any action you take has to be unanimous in order to pass a motion.
Got it. Okay, so September 2024 minutes, has everyone had the opportunity to review them?
Yep.
So can I have a roll call vote?
And make a motion to accept?
Make a motion to adopt, yep. Second?
Second. Stella?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Christian.
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, okay. The meeting minutes are accepted. All right, so the first item for public hearing this evening is a continuation of the Farino garage area variance. Applicant is seeking an area variance for a detached garage. Section 155-26A-1D1 states that the accessory structure shall not exceed 25% of the principal structure in bulk, which is 2,280 square feet. Therefore, the maximum size of the accessory structure cannot exceed 570 square feet. As the proposed structure is 2,232 square feet, the applicant is seeking a variance relief for this bulk requirement. All right, so, good evening.
Good afternoon.
Welcome. So, do you have something to share with us?
You could ask for new drawings again.
Yes.
Yep.
Got it. Okay, great.
One.
Thank you.
Proposed garage, beautiful.
All right, you might want to, Mr. Chairman, you might want to just remind the applicant that there's this middle deadlines, so unfortunately, you're not going to be able to consider this tonight because you haven't been able to digest it, but...
No, no, no. The last time we left, all we were told was to add the, all we said was to add the well onto the same, the exact same drawing, and you said just to bring it back to December 3rd meeting. That was all that was said.
Still have this.
And so, that's what we did. At no point did anyone ever say that we needed to drop it off or do anything else. So we've had these drawings for quite a while now, and we've just been waiting, and I've been trying to call for quite a while and had a hard time getting through. So, I mean, at some point, someone in the town could have called and said, we're, I mean, we've been doing this since how long now? Back and forth. I mean, at some point, this is enough. All that's different on here is exactly what you wanted, the well and the height of the difference. Nothing else has changed. There's nothing else to consider. All you wanted was the engineer to put where the well was.
Do you guys need time to look at the drawings and would you do it at this point? They're not giving anything like the ground stories and their stuff. It's not like we'll do that anymore. We've already been doing this. This is going on, I think, at least 34 months or whatever it is, so if you guys need time to look at everything.
I think you guys need to...
Do you need to do it?
Just familiarize yourself with the code. It says right in the code, you know, the submission requirements.
So, I think we were asking for the height of the building, both buildings on there, right? The septic?
That's the septic, the well.
The wells, yes, that's...
When I spoke to Jess, she said that, that it was 10 feet.
Yep.
Okay, I read this somewhere in my speech, but it's 10 feet, come on. It's 10 feet on the drawing, if it be moved...
Can you just go to the mic? It's 10 feet on the drawing. If it has to be moved, we can move it. It doesn't, okay? But from what she said, it meets the code.
Okay.
Okay, I think that there's approximately a two-foot difference between the existing house and the proposed building.
Okay.
Okay, which would put us out of, I think you said that it can't be higher than the building.
Right.
Okay, and like we said, we had a little discussion about where we were measuring from. That is from the property in front of the house, from the front door. Okay, so it's probably at least a 15-foot elevation difference anyway, so the building is still going to be probably at least 10 feet, 12 feet below the house.
The grade drops off considerably behind the house, right?
Yes.
Behind the house and to the right.
Yeah, I would say from the front of the house to the back, where the building's going to be, it's at least 10, 15 feet.
Okay.
And the eaves of the new building, we figured, needed to be in the square footage? That's what Jess said. When I spoke with her, she said that they added it. I mean, I guess that's debatable. It's, you know, it's not an enclosed area, it's not going to be a cement floor. I really don't, you know, I mean, I think we could split hairs on if it's part of it or not.
No problems. So, just to share with the board, so we have a letter from the Z.A., and that I guess she provided to you.
I'm sorry, from who?
Jessica Patterson-Petersen, the zoning administrator. And I guess she wrote to you on October 15th to say, "Dear Mr. Farino, after careful review, I've determined that the sides of the building that overhang shall be included in the total square footage of the building."
Yeah, when I spoke to her, that's what she said.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know that it's written someplace from what I've heard, a carport, which is basically what it is. There is no, and that's coming from her, that there is no size, there is nothing, so whatever. At this point, it's, you know, you want to include her in the square footage, we'll include her in square footage.
It's, just for your, for the record, it's considered a canopy. Under our code, a canopy is a roof-like structure of a permanent nature which projects from the wall of a building and overhangs the public way, and awning is not included in this definition. So it's permanent.
Okay, so, it is what it is. Okay. All right, so, just go back here for a second, just to review.
First of all, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Yep, all right, so I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, favor.
Roll call.
All in favor? All right, okay. All right, so...
This goes back a couple of months, doesn't it?
Yeah, oh yeah, yes.
Now, just ask the applicant to refresh her recollection as to everything and orient yourself so we can bring this full circle.
Okay, what would you like?
What would you like?
I'd appreciate that, actually. I would appreciate that, if you could just just summary...
My name's Frank Farino, 137 Andrews Road. We're looking to put a garage on the side, in the backyard on the side of the house.
Okay.
But, it's good.
So the existing building is, what did we say, 25% of the existing building, the home, would be 570 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
And the proposed of what they're asking for in the new building is 2,232 square feet.
Oh.
So, if the new building is, if the barn is 2,232, the, what did we say this, because I had that written down.
Is it a barn? Is it not a garage?
Yeah, it's a storage.
Oh, okay, okay.
He has a lot of stuff to get out of the weather and put into storage, so he's looking to build a barn to hold it all.
A barn, okay, then it's...
So...
A little bit more.
So it's a 1,662.8-foot... Square home. No, that's what they're seeking relief from, 1,662.8 feet, square feet.
So, I think you guys should be looking at the map as well, and you can see the location of the well.
Yes.
To the canopy is less than 10 feet. There's a squiggly line that's red with a...
10-foot minimum?
Yeah, with a triangle with the number 1, and according to that legend, under the table of bulk requirements...
The 1, the revision?
It is less than 10 feet. I don't know what it means, but just so the record's clear, under 155-26 accessory structures, the structure, the well cannot be within 10 feet of a permanent structure.
Okay, and it says it's a 10-foot minimum, and that's squiggly red line.
Right, what's the 1 denoteing there? That's what I'm looking for. Well, it seems to refer to the building height. The triangle 1, yes, the triangle 1 is referred to the building height.
The thing is, we don't have an engineer explain what the measurement is.
So, I guess, my confusion, normally if you have, you're marking the distance from something, you would indicate what that distance is, and so this seems to indicate that there's a requirement for 10-foot, but it doesn't say, now, I don't know if I understood you to say that the, this structure can really be placed wherever you need it to be.
This is towards the front of the house.
Right, so you can stay 10 feet away from the well?
I can stay 20 feet away.
Okay, I guess that's what you're...
They put down on you that it's a minimum of 10 feet, so when we set it, there will be a minimum of 10. It's not staked out, it's not staked out.
Got it.
Okay, so it's a minimum of 10 feet. We will go 10, we will go 15 feet away from the well, just to make sure we're 100% clear.
Right.
I don't see it.
Yeah, and we...
I'm sorry, did the board change? No?
No, why?
Okay.
Yep, still us.
I really haven't came to this stuff.
Yeah, that's, so you probably saw Linda and Stella, did you make that?
I probably, no, I was on medical leave for a number of months, that's why I asked you to please go over it, so that I...
There's five of us, and whoever's here...
So does the height of this structure exceed the height of your present principal home?
Yes.
Okay, so now you have to consider that as an additional variance, which is not before you.
When we, the last time, we said that that could just be added on to the variance, you just needed to know that the height is.
So will it be above the height of your home from the road?
No, it'll probably be about 10 feet below the height of the house from the road.
Okay.
The road is probably about 10, 15 feet above the house.
Yeah, definitely drops way down in the back. It drops, yeah, definitely. So is it from the road? Would they need a variance for that?
The measurement of the roof height is from the road to the...
That's not what you said the last time. You said the measurement from the existing house was from the ground level of the front, from where...
Talking about the accessory, the accessory structure.
The accessory structure, okay.
No, I think it helps you, but I want to clarify, make sure I understand, so it's from the road to the top of the house, and from the road to the top of the accessory structure?
Yes.
So the accessory structure will be 10 feet or more below the top of the house from the road?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like we don't need to address that. Okay.
It says in the bulk requirements, the existing is 15.5 plus or minus, higher grade to roof ridge, and then on the proposed, it's less than 35 feet. So...
That's 20 feet.
Maximum building, how you do that? Minus 50 existing required.
That's where the confusion lies here.
What the grade actually is, what the measurements actually... Man, man. Right, I mean, you're required to have a maximum building height of 35 feet?
You cannot exceed...
Right, maximum 35 feet, I should say.
But it also, under the code, it cannot exceed the height of the roof of the main home.
And I don't think it does it. We said you had barriers for that. It was like a two-foot difference, and we could, and so you can add that barriers, haunted barriers for the square footage.
Well, I think we're trying to, you know, again, I mean, I definitely can appreciate the frustration of the process, so I understand where you're coming from with that, what, you know...
I understand where you guys are coming from.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to get caught up in anything. I just, it seems like every time we come, I'm guessing you have a town lawyer?
Yeah.
Okay, it just seems like if there's something else to put up every time, it's just very frustrating, yes.
You should, you should bring that to him up once. So the house, the road is higher than our house?
Yep.
If that's what you're confused about?
No, I think we're okay with that. What I was trying to clarify is, my understanding is that the requirement is that this accessory structure not be taller than your house from the road, and definitely won't be.
It's higher, I'll read the code.
Okay.
It's lower. I'll read the applicable code.
Just one more.
All right, the applicable section of the code is 155-26A-1. Detached accessory structures over 120 square feet. Sub B says, "Shall not be located within any required yards or within 10 feet of operative septic tanks and/or leach fields." So that's B. C, "Shall be located no closer to the street than the front of the principal structure." Meets that.
Yep.
D, "Shall respect the scale and character of the principal structure and shall not, one, exceed 25% of the principal structure in bulk, nor, two, exceed the height of the principal structure."
And the height of the principal structure is defined as the elevation from the road?
Let me get that definition under the code.
Have you had the opportunity to talk to your neighbors about this structure?
Yes.
Have they given you any feedback? I know no one's here this evening.
Actually, one of them, I just went down to Florida for the winter, asked if we wanted the neighbors to come, since I help just about everybody in the neighborhood, help everybody in the neighborhood out if they, if we wanted them to come down and ask why. They've given us all I've got.
Okay.
And I told them it wasn't necessary.
Okay, and so that was one neighbor, and on the other side?
That's my neighbor across the street, my other neighbor, that lives down on Long Island, he's trying to take care of our property, she has no problem. Both neighbors on both sides have absolutely no problem with it.
And they understand what you're proposing to...
They completely understand, yes.
Okay.
And nothing would happen to the neighbors, they didn't even accept. We had to send out like 21 or whatever it was to let everyone know we've got a problem with half of that, so...
Folks probably don't know what that is.
They don't even want to...
No, and the two neighbors on either side would be most impacted from the point of view of...
Either one of them have a problem.
Yep.
So is the issue the size that they want to build?
Right, so my understanding is that, I think the only issue, certainly the main issue, is that, right, that the code would require a structure no bigger than 570 square feet, and they're proposing...
Almost as big as the house.
It's, yeah, it's, is it bigger than the house, or...
It's almost as big as the house.
It's bigger than the house.
I have 30, 36-foot camper that I want to try to get out of the weather.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I have multiple four-wheel, my sunnaces dirt bikes, we have multiple dirt bikes.
Yep.
Okay, my truck has been running. I'm sure, you know, we all live up here in the lab, we do so that, we all have a gap with it and everything, and it's just, it's getting real tight.
I think for me, one thing that's helpful is how much the property slopes, where, you know, this structure being behind the house, it's kind of downhill from...
So there's a couple of things that occur with, when you get engineered drawings, that, you know, generally the grade should be on there to tell us, especially so that we know, and we're not guessing heights, right? Like, we know where you are to the existing well, but it doesn't, it just says 10-foot minimum, it doesn't tell us how close that actually is to your proposal. I know we can move it, but if we move it, you actually got to get another set of plans so that we know you're not encroaching on some other zoning code. And that's not trying to be a jerk, that's just, you know what I mean? So, I'm trying to rationalize and get everything rolled up in a cute little bow here while looking over minutes for the last, two times we've been here, over the last four months, right? So, it's a tough one.
All right, well, elevation wasn't the issue the last time, yeah. The issue the last time was, we said that you would measure from the front to front of the building, from the ground level, from the front of the building, okay? You needed to know the height of the existing house, and the height of the proposed structure.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that's what we did. We asked for this from the road, because if it's from the road, okay, from the road, if you put a level from my road, okay, to my house, we probably hit, put in 5 feet of ugly power.
Right.
Okay, it comes...
Absolutely.
And it goes down again in the back where the proposed building was.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is, all that is supposed to be laid out here.
That was not asked for the last time, otherwise we would have had them to do some kind of elevation on that. You said that you needed this existing well and the height of the houses, the height of the structures.
So generally, generally, everything gets put on here that's needed. If we ask for it, it would go here, because the verbal transition just leaves us open to everybody else doing the same thing. That's why generally if we ask for something, it has to get translated here, so when somebody else says, "You did it for them," we go pull the map and say, and everything that's vague here gets to be vague on everybody else's. So, and I'm not, again, I'm not, I'm just...
Like I said, I go with codes, I work on the city, I'm an elevator designer. I go with codes, they change from year to year.
Absolutely, yes.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to say that I don't...
No, no, absolutely, I know.
I'm just trying to work this out so we don't have to keep coming back.
Absolutely.
At this point, I've already spoken with Jess, and she said that I can put pretty much as many 570 square foot structures as I want.
Right.
Okay, I don't want the place to look like, you know, a mess. I'm trying to make a nice barn so I can keep all my stuff out of the weather and out of sight.
Right.
Okay, I could better well put two structures up, that's all, I can get my camper out, I can put two separate drawings.
Right.
Okay, right where this is going to be.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's what I'm saying. I'm thinking one nice structure would be good, but it just, and like I said, I understand where you guys are coming from, you don't want to farm yourselves.
Right.
But it just seems like it's got to be a little tedious.
Could I ask you what you plan to do with the existing sheds? I see you have maybe three, two small ones and a bigger one?
I have a 25, yes, we moved in.
Okay.
And then, within the last year, my mom has come down with dementia, and she is staying with us to get rid of my furniture that I had in my downstairs. And so right now, both those sheds are there. I'm going to say it's definitely temporary, I don't know how long she's going to be with us, okay? But we had to make room for her downstairs.
Right, so you're keeping these sheds for now? Is that what you're telling me? Okay.
For now, she's saying for now, it's temporary.
Yeah, they're not permanent, but they're temporary for...
For the time being, okay. So basically, the issue is, it's telling us what the code is, but it's not telling us where the distance, the actual distance, that it is.
Right, but, I mean, let's assume he's got 10-foot there.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we're running down to the size to the principal structure, and then, and if we, and I know from looking at the property, it does have a quite great down...
Go through the five criteria.
Go through the five?
Yeah, we're going to have to, because now, this new map has been there, injected into the record. You can ask questions from it and use the criteria to get the facts, make a record.
We have five talking points here.
The applicant seeking a area variance...
All right.
For the accessory structure to be relieved from the 155-26, maximum 25%.
That's a big one.
All right. So, in light of the updated site map and information that we have, let's go through the criteria, I don't know if you have your submission that you gave us, and just review the five criteria, those are the five criteria that we have to make this determination on.
Is that the two-page letter that I sent you?
So what I had was this typed up, where you addressed the five points typed up.
So you want us to address that again?
If we could just go through that again, and this way we can consider and review.
Read them into record and then you question, yeah.
Yep.
All right, so go ahead. Oh, you want me to read the question?
So, we can start with number one, "Will an undesirable change be produced in the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties be created by granting the variance?"
Okay, I'm going to, I guess, read to you what I wrote. "No, the structure is going to have an overall positive impact. It will be aesthetically pleasing and bring value to our property and our neighborhood. As of right now, as we've previously said before, we've got a tractor, we've got four dirt bikes, we actually have more dirt bikes now. We have an RV camper, it's 36 feet long, we've got ATVs, we've got bicycles, we've got a seven-foot snowplow. Having this equipment exposed leaves an eyesore on our property. Leaving our machines left unhurt poses a potential risk to groundwater. We would like to get this off and covered. When it rains, we've got pollutants coming off our machines, it could possibly be going into the ground. Our house water is our well water, which is on our property, so the pollutants are a potential hazard. We would like to, we rely on our well water, and we do not want to contaminate anything. The garage is visually appealing, and it's going to enhance the property."
Okay.
Question number two.
Do you have any questions based on her comments? Go around. Stella?
No, trying to, yeah. So are you saying you're having an issue with when it rains?
I'm not having an issue with anything. What I'm trying to point out is to you, we have all of our equipment exposed, it's in our... It's in our driveway, it's in our backyard, it's on the grass. We would like to get it covered and get it off the lawn. You asked for reasons, these are potential reasons. Why would you wanna leave your tractor and your four-wheeler on your grass? Why would you want the rain to come onto your equipment and then ruin your soil?
We're just trying to put everything.
We're trying to give you every possible reason why we need a large garage to cover all of our stuff. Right now, it's everywhere, we have a lot of things over the last twenty-five years. We've accumulated a lot of stuff, and now it needs to be covered.
Do we know what the floor of the barn structure's gonna be?
The floor's gonna be cement, and the overhangs are allowing to be, um, or lean-to's are gonna be ground.
Ground.
Is there, uh, electric, water, sewer going to the?
Water and sewer, no, eventually I would like to put electric in there.
Anything else on number one?
Nothing on number one. Let's move on.
Number two, can the desired result be achieved by some other means than granting a variance?
No, it's not possible to achieve your, our desired result.
Not possible to achieve that desired result, you know what, we can, like I said, we can get around, okay, but we're just trying to make it look a little bit nicer and not add multiple, multiple buildings up to store different things.
You can ask questions such as whether they're, they can achieve their means of housing their vehicles in a, a five hundred and seventy-foot, a square foot structure, which is, meets the code.
Great, you got him.
Okay, no, because our camper is thirty-six foot long, it's not gonna fit in there. Plus our tractor, plus our four four-wheelers, plus all of my son's dirt bikes, plus our seven-foot snowplow. No, it's not gonna fit. I would love for it to fit, it'd be a lot less expensive, but it's not going to fit. If it would have fit, we wouldn't be going through this to begin with. If it would have fit from the beginning, right?
Yeah, you gotta understand, it, it's substantial compared to the house, and that's the part, we're trying to work with you to get everywhere we can. I understand the frustration, but, believe me, the hard part.
It's a small house.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing, when we get to that code that's twenty-five percent of the principal, we, we've given, uh, relief, but we've never given this kind of relief. So, we're really struggling, we're trying, so, Anna, please.
No, I understand what you're coming from, but it's almost like we'd be penalized for having a small, moderate house. Okay, there's, there's other people that are on a half acre that have these monstrosities that, um, you know, it's like they're walking on their grass just to have their cars.
Right.
I can, I can give you this legal advice, it's like the, the, um, ZBA doesn't have to find in favor of the applicant on every one of the five questions, okay? Rather, the ZBA must merely take each of the factors into account. So, the ZBA may also decide that a lesser variance than the one requested would be appropriate, or may decide that there are alternatives available to the applicant which would not require a variance.
Right. So, I, I, I just wanna.
So, just to expound on that.
Right.
Whether the ZBA decides to grant an area variance, state law requires the ZBA to grant the minimum variance necessary to provide relief, while at the same time taking care to protect the character of the neighborhood and the health and safety and welfare of the community. For these reasons, the ZBA may also impose reasonable conditions on the granting of any variance.
So, you know, I, I, I just wanna share from what I'm hearing, so, you have a large camper, right? I mean, that's, we said.
It's not even, in, in respect to campers, it's not even that large.
Well, but I mean, it's thirty, it's a thirty-six foot camper, so, it's, it's a, it's a big camper, right?
Substantial.
Um, and now, the structure you're proposing is not only big enough to fit that camper, you could fit two campers that size in there, right? And then you have the lean-tos, where you can also, you know, th- those are quite large. So, the, the reason why I'm saying that is because, again, we're going back to what the, the zoning, uh, regulations are, and we're trying to understand what you're asking, and the magnitude of the variance that you're requesting is, is directly related to what you're proposing, right? I mean, if you said you wanted a thirty-six by twenty structure, it would be a much smaller structure.
Okay, so here's, here's the thing, um, the reason the building's that high is because they need to need code, the building needs to be code for the, for the roof, to fit the camper under, because not only is the camper thirty-six feet long, which is why the building is thirty, thirty-six feet or whatever it is, okay, I need the height also, okay? It's gotta be, I have, I have to have a clear, it's a twelve foot.
Got it.
That's why the peak of the building is so high to get the slope.
I understand.
Okay, and that's why the building is that long. Um, the other lean-to, I mean, honestly, I just figured I would use that to store firewood. If that's gonna be an issue, we could eliminate, if it's a matter of how much square footage it is, I could eliminate the second lean-to, I need one lean-to to put the camper, because the camper will not fit in the garage. Okay, I'm not gonna have thirteen, fourteen-foot doors, it's gonna look like a commercial building, okay? Um, so the lean-to, one lean-to to the camper, okay? Since, since the building is gonna be thirty-six feet, okay, long, we can put in the whole building.
Oh, sorry, so one lean-to is for the camper?
One lean-to.
Okay, so the camper's not going inside?
It's not gonna fit in.
Oh, I see.
Okay, like I said, I would have to put a fourteen-foot door, it would look like a commercial building, but I really.
You don't want.
I'd make it look more like a barn, so it actually looks like it belongs in a formal area.
If you eliminated the, um, the garage area, the overhang for the, uh, camper, what would the dimensions of the building be?
That, that's, that's one of the reasons that I'm putting up the building, so I can get the camper out of the snow. So I need the lean-to, I can get rid of the other lean-to on the other side.
Which is twelve foot? The twelve foot one?
The small one.
Yeah, twelve foot.
That's gonna be to store the fire.
So, twelve foot by thirty-six.
I have an old car, like we said, we have multiple four-wheelers and dirt bikes, one equipment, zero turn, um, the tractor.
That one for the camper is five hundred and forty square feet. Right. So, but if they remove the twelve by thirty-six, what's that give us off?
I mean, exactly what the problem is, is that the square footage is too much?
Well, so.
It's substantial.
So, again, you know, the, the code requires a structure, given the size of your home, no larger than five hundred and seventy square feet, so we're considering a variance from that. If the variance was for six hundred square feet, it'd be a thirty-foot, you know, I mean, it, I, I'd be hard-pressed to say no, you know, thirty feet over what is required in the code. The more we depart from that five hundred and seventy number, the more we're in, you know, uh, territory that we, we've never granted a variance for. So, what we're, you know, you're seeking is almost more than three times what the code would require. So, that's, that's why we're looking at these dimensions and trying to understand.
Well, when we originally, uh, when we originally spoke, when we originally spoke to the town, okay, the lean-to weren't included in the square footage.
Right.
That's why when we first came back, I think the, the actual enclosed garage, I think it was only about.
Twelve hundred, twelve hundred ninety-six feet of the actual garage space.
I get it, but, but, but you're, you're not proposing not having the lean-tos, right? It's not an option.
Well, originally, the lean-tos, um, we were told do not, uh, that's why our attorney said that, they don't, they, they weren't part of the square footage.
And I think that was a mistake in the way that it was interpreted initially, because they, you know, my understanding is that they are part of the, the square footage.
So maybe if you just try to cut all out of time short, can you tell me what is a, what is a, um, square footage that you guys would, okay?
Yeah, what's the maximum square?
Like I said, I mean, if we're gonna just go without, without getting any variance, I can just put up multiple five hundred and seventy square foot ones. If not, if you guys tell me, you know what, we'll grant you a twelve hundred square foot, maybe I'll put the garage, and I'll put a separate, um, uh, carport, okay, which doesn't suit the end code for, according to Jess, okay? I'll just put that next to the garage, and it will be attached, so we won't interfere with any of the variances, okay? And then I can go and have my garage, and I can put my stuff in it, the, the height will be lower, okay? And I'll just have a separate, a separate carport for the camper.
That I can live with.
I, you can't comment about what Jessica's gonna interpret and what she isn't, and.
Yeah.
We really, you can't consider conversations that are hearsay.
Right.
So, that's, that's, uh.
It's pretty much a vote on the application before us or not, that's really what we're at.
Well, you can, you can deviate.
But if we, let's say we, we get to numbers where, uh, he's accepting, he has to get engineered plans drawn and brought back?
Well, I mean, if he was proposing not having the lean-tos, I think we have the information we need to, to understand what that would be entailed. If it was just the structure without the lean-tos, it'd be a structure that was thirty-six by thirty-six.
And it would be lower, because I wouldn't need the extra height for the lean-to for the camper. So, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't happen at the height that was in the, um.
So, it'd be twelve hundred ninety-six square feet.
But is that something that can be amended here, or is he have to come back with new, uh, plans and everything? That's what I'm getting at.
Oh, you know, you would have to have, like, final plans for your consideration. Here's the artist's rendering that he submitted previously.
That's thirty, the thirty-six by thirty-six.
With the two lean-tos, yeah.
With the two lean-tos, yeah.
It's an enclosed, the lean-to's an enclosed structure, that's why it's considered a, in the square footage.
Can we say whether, could we vote on whether we would approve a thirty-six by thirty-six structure?
Well, if the lean-to wasn't enclosed, because only one of them was enclosed, it's not even fully closed, it's only three sides.
Yeah, that's considered enclosed.
Okay, so what?
If you had just an overhang, and you're not, that.
So, what, all, all three sides would have to be open, only one side of the garage? Okay, then that square footage wouldn't be considered?
No, it would be, but it might be aesthetically more pleasing to this board, I don't, I can't speak for them, but.
I thought.
Well, I thought it was more square footage, you know, that would be visible.
It is square footage.
Okay, I mean, I, honestly, I think it would look better if you don't see the camper, if you, if you saw the, uh, barn.
It is a square footage.
All right, 'cause if we, if we get down to thirty-six by thirty-six, the barn with no lean-tos on it.
Yes, but.
We're at eleven forty, right? The square foot.
Okay.
Which is still, uh.
Double.
Twice, twice the what? It's allowed, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-six by thirty-six.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, twenty, twelve ninety-six, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve ninety-six, and then.
And what's allowed, double what's allowed would be eleven forty.
I got you, right?
'Cause this would be a seven hundred and twenty-six square meters.
So, could we, the relief would be, could we vote on whether we would, or, whether we would
No, because we have.
Approve a thirty-six by thirty-six structure?
I don't know that we can vote, I think we can discuss it, but don't we have to have something?
You would have to have another, like, are you leaning that way? I mean, I don't want the applicant to spend more money.
Yeah.
So, if it was a thirty-six by thirty-six, the relief he'd be seeking, um, would be seven hundred and twenty-six square feet.
Thirty-six by thirty-six?
Yeah, if he took away both, both these, right?
Plus the five hundred.
The barn is thirty-six by thirty-six, correct?
Yes.
Thirty-six by thirty-six.
Thirty-six by thirty, yeah.
It would be twelve, twelve ninety-six.
And five seventy is what he's allowed, right?
So, it'd be relief.
Seven twenty, seven twenty-six?
Seven twenty-six would be the variance.
Seven hundred and twenty-six square feet would be the variance.
The relief, right. So, you know, that's.
Can you guys, like, not vote and just, like, come up with a number that you feel would, that you would be able to be comfortable with?
Well, that's what I'm.
That's what we're doing, yeah.
I can see if, uh, I mean, I mean, it might not have to be thirty-six.
That's what I'm trying to get at, 'cause.
The reason it's thirty-six is because it's thirty-six for the camper.
'Cause from my perspective, there's a lot of value in getting all the stuff into a structure.
Agreed, agreed, and we're just trying to get to where we don't have something so egregious that, you know?
Yeah.
And, and shy of sitting here and telling you what you should build, which we can't do.
You can throw out ideas.
Yeah, so that's what we're trying, we're, we're trying to discuss different things that you might be, that you might be okay with. Yes, yes, so, um, but, so.
So, the main reason, I just wanna think through from your perspective, the main reason why this was thirty-six was 'cause you were hoping to sneak the camper underneath it.
Thirty-six.
Under the lean-to.
It was fourteen and you're almost twelve.
If, if you weren't gonna put the camper under this, then thirty-six by thirty-six.
It doesn't have to be thirty-six, I mean, it could be thirty by forty, okay?
Right, so, there's some, there's, there's a number for, you know, in terms of the size of the structure and what you're hoping to fit in there, some, some number above five seventy, 'cause if it was five seventy, we wouldn't be here. Um, and, you know, under, you know, twelve ninety-six is thirty-six by thirty-six. So, um, you know, wh- from, what, what would you, from your perspective, what would be the minimum structure that would accommodate what you need? Yes, no, I get it.
We have a bunch of stuff, I mean, look at it this way, I've got an old camera, I've got the truck that I'd like to get out of the weather, okay?
Couple of vehicles.
And we have a tractor, so we have three fairly full sized vehicles that will load.
Gotcha.
And you're, you're the one who has to make the minimum variance necessary.
No, no, but I, I, I'm trying to understand what.
What does he need at the very least?
From a practical point of view, what they're hoping to accomplish, because if, you know, if we.
I would like to put up some, whether it's thirty-six or thirty-six by thirty-six, whatever, something as big as I can that you guys will approve, so that this way I can keep all my stuff in one place and not have multiple buildings around the yard. I mean, I believe those two sheds that you're talking about, not by choice, okay?
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
As far as that, I get the mention.
We'd like our property to look nice.
Yes.
Yes.
And I would like to have all the stuff out of my driveway and off my lawn.
Yeah.
I want it to look nice.
So that's why we're just trying to be, it's on the side, it's in the back.
To hold that.
They also have to put, uh, trees on the side of it, and you.
And for the molding part, when the trees, when all the leaves are in, you're not even gonna see the building. It's not like you're gonna see it from the street, like, you know, you're not gonna see it.
You know, one of the challenges from the ZBA perspective, certainly from my perspective, is that, you know, so you have a home, what, what was the square footage of your home?
Twenty-two eighty.
No, that was the home, that was the barn.
Twelve.
Twelve hundred?
Twelve thirteen hundred square feet.
It's a small, it's a small.
No, no, and I get it, I mean, it's, you know.
We both agree with what I do call, I'm saying, please.
Yep, no, I, I get it.
Twenty-two eighty, right?
We had the time for hope, yeah.
Or am I misreading it?
I get it.
The proposed structure is twenty-two.
So, so, and again, I'm not, you know, the, the size of your home is not what I'm, I'm.
It's a very small.
It, it's a small home, so, the, part of the challenge is, if, you know, let's say, where we, you know, we would consider and grant a variance of this magnitude, then someone could come to us with a home that was, let's say, you know, an average two thousand square foot home.
Let me just say, one of the, uh.
Five thousand square foot barn, it would be the size of, you know, it'd be bigger than, uh, you know, a commercial building, almost. And, and it would be in line with what you're asking.
Yeah.
No, like, like I said, I can really see where you guys, why you're trying to cover this stuff, okay? Um, that's what I'm saying. If you can give me an idea, if, uh, I mean, I, I actually went, when we first went to go talk to, I don't even think it was Jess, when it was, uh, Ethel.
Yep.
Okay, we spoke to him, and I was like, you tell me what size, and he's like, well, just put down what you want, and we'll see if it passes. And if it doesn't, I didn't realize it was gonna be in every month, you know, back and forth. If they would've just told me, look, the watch statement approved is, uh.
There isn't a number.
And, and I would've said, okay, well, we'll try whatever eight hundred square feet, but, um.
You know, I mean, ultimately, the board is gonna, would have to vote, and, you know, whatever the number, um, you know, the number would be whatever the, the board would, would be inclined to.
What number would you be comfortable with?
Yeah, so, would you consider being smaller, would you be, consider being smaller by somewhere around thirty-six by thirty? It, what I'm looking at when I see the numbers at thirty-six by thirty is a thousand eighty square foot, and, uh, you're allowed five seventy, so the relief is five-ten, right?
Okay.
Which is way more, uh, uh, desirable than, uh, the original number. And, so, when we, when we look at stuff like this, it, it, so many things come into play. Uh, location, how many homes in your area, if you're in a residential, uh, area, if you're in, on a cul-de-sac, you know? Uh, and if the house looks like another house on the same property, um, you know, besides a step. besides aesthetics, there's just a myriad of stuff we have to look at. Um, so it's not, we, it, we get caught up by other people seeing what we say for you, but it's not totally the same for everybody. There are certain reasons why we would give you uh less or more compared to somebody else. Somebody else may have uh two hundred acres and they're putting it on the far backside and maybe looking for, say, seven hundred square foot of relief, you know. We may be more encouraged to give it because they got nobody around, they own miles of acres. Um, so, but the area you're in, right, the original proposal looks like another house on the same property. And uh, so, and the relief number itself is quite substantial. That's why we wanted to make sure if we were even going to consider the original proposal, that everything else met. Because if something else didn't uh fall in line and it would uh make it a moot point, then we didn't have to struggle with everything else. But, and I could tell from looking at the property that the grade looked like you would make the peak with no problem. But we, we still usually need to have, not usually, we need to have that in the engineer's drawing, right? The same thing with septic and water setbacks, they always have to be on there. But for consideration, would you downsize, would you be open to downsize?
Yeah, well, like I said, if, if this isn't going to work, I'm going to have to put whatever I can to add to the variance and it's just going to be multiple buildings.
Right.
So let me just um clarify a legal issue that came up earlier about the uh, on, the, I'm not owning the um.
Overhangs?
Overhangs, yeah. So um, under the code, gross floor area is defined as the total area taken on a horizontal plane measured to the extreme outer limits of all floors of the principal building and all accessory buildings, exclusive of uncovered porches, terraces, and steps. So if it's uncovered, it's not included. So that's why this overhang, which has part of lean-to.
Right.
That is considered um gross floor area, so you have to consider it for, uh, as part of the variance.
Yep.
Even though it's not fully enclosed.
But it's covered.
Yep.
But if he was to take those off of, if we're trying to uh encourage, for lack of a better word, uh, a change in size of the structure, right?
If you're considering that, you can, you can put conditions on there. So you can condition it on a thirty-six by thirty structure without this lean-to for the uh, you know, for the camper.
Alright, so now, there's, this.
What, what structure, I mean, the way you read that, what structure wouldn't have roof?
No.
If you say, finish, you said.
It all has a roof, but the, anything that is covering the, the camper is considered in this gross floor area.
Square footage, so the overhangs that you would use to part the.
If it's under the roof, if it's going to be part of the, the square footage, essentially, that's what we're.
Okay.
That's what this board has to consider.
Thirty-six by thirty.
So, well. So if we uh consider the original application before us, we have to consider what Craig was saying. If he's willing to.
If you're willing to modify.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Can we do that here and make a vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Contingent, and you can make it contingent on um submission of, you know, a new plan, new plan to the building department.
But we would have already given him the variance contingent on that application, go before Jess with no other issues.
Yeah.
Or a specific number.
Yes, okay, so, now that we got this far down the road. I'm sorry, guys, it's hard on all of us and we, it never fails, every application before us has some little different twist and it's never the same. Um, okay, so, considering uh what we know about the overhangs, about the size of the variance requested on the original application, would you be interested in sizing down to possibly a thirty-six by thirty?
If that's what we can do, then that's.
But as a, so you're asking for a straw poll on that? Can you do that, Craig?
No, I didn't make a motion to um accept um the plans as um modified to a thirty-six by thirty.
I'm going to walk out for five minutes, you guys decide when you come up with a number, you feel is good, and then we're going to go back in.
Well, you stay right there because otherwise everything's being, uh, yeah, no, we don't want anything to look, yeah, no, 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 you're fine. Alright, so thirty by, what, what I'm getting at to the chairperson is potentially
Yep.
an application change to a thirty-six by thirty, no overhangs, which would be uh a adjustment for relief of.
Seven twenty-six.
Uh, no, thirty-six by thirty-six.
No, it's thirty-six by thirty, you said, right?
Oh, thirty-six by thirty, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's one thousand eighty square feet.
Minus the five seventy.
Minus five seventy for a variance of five hundred and ten square feet.
That's it, okay, so now.
You're good with that?
That's, that's, right, so.
Yeah.
How do you feel about asking that application?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Stella? I'm good with it.
Okay. Is the, the product that you're working with, can they make it whatever size you?
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to call them now and see if they can.
Well, the only reason why, because if we're going to vote on it and they can't make it that size.
They'll find somebody else.
That.
Because the contingency is.
That's not part of your.
No, no, but I, I'm, I'm just saying, like, it doesn't help him if he can't do.
He can go small.
If I may, basically, we're saying thirty-six by thirty to get to a number. Then as long as that number is reached, it does not have to be, it could be thirty-three by thirty-three kind of thing, whatever may work best for you, correct?
As, as long as it doesn't impede on any other zoning law.
Right.
Well, and the, the reason why I was saying that in part is because thirty-six by thirty-six is what the structure was proposed without the overhangs.
Right.
So, you know, I, you know.
Right, so, but what I'm getting at is getting to that thirty puts us at just less than double of the.
What's thirty-six?
And the reason why I, I was saying the thirty-six by thirty-six, because the layout of this property is, you know, from my perspective, is conducive because the property slopes down away from the road.
Absolutely, yes.
Where it's, the structure's going to look a lot smaller than it is, you know.
How much of the structure is going to be below grade? That, that's something that, you know, you're, it's not before you for consideration.
Right.
Because you don't have really an artist's rendering of the topography to, to see it.
We make that all on Jess contingent, the, the size and everything else has to pass, Jess's smell test.
Right, I mean, I'm, my understanding is that the, 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 this structure would be more than ten, fifteen feet under the elevation of the home from the road.
From the road.
Yeah.
But without, see, that's what we're saying about, without that on here, it's kind of tough.
Right.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm more inclined to the thirty-six by thirty than thirty-six by thirty-six to be, you know, uh, double of, you know, uh, he gets the.
You'll get square footage and you'll get elevation.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that that's, that's the least modification to what you're proposing, what you're, you're seeking relief from based on your, your plans. Um, but I, you know, obviously if the, the, the rest of the board wouldn't, wouldn't be uh.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to help the.
So without putting words in your mouth, what I'm sensing is that be, based on the topography of the property and the fact that you wouldn't be able to see it from the road, um, the maximum variance that you're willing, that you're willing to give would still be almost a hundred percent over what is allowed under the code.
Exactly.
So thirty-six by thirty is a thousand eighty square feet, that's five hundred and ten square feet.
Yep.
Of a variance.
Yep.
So it's just sixty feet, square feet shy of.
What's allowed.
A hundred percent.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a big variance.
It is.
So, but it's.
But because of the topography of the property, it's unique enough that it will not be detrimental to the rest of the neighborhood.
It's up against one tree line and he's willing to put up other trees where we can put up a contingency for also.
Mm-hmm.
But uh, yeah.
And it's also, if you're not over that size, it shouldn't be low.
Yes, absolutely, the roof line comes down.
This won't be low, keep us at least.
I hear you.
Also, it's, so the, the home according to parcel access is eleven hundred and forty square feet. So it would keep us under the size of the home, which is.
Just on, yeah, yeah, there's a lot of things, uh, but one in, it's.
Still be half.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's part of the code.
That's.
So, how, what's your feelings on thirty-six by thirty?
Thirty-six by thirty, I'm very good with it.
How's yours?
Absolutely.
Okay. If we ask you for an adjustment, would you be willing to build it thirty-six by thirty contingent that everything passes by Jess downstairs in the building department on whatever information she needs, new drawings and whatever?
So the missing pieces that we don't have right now?
You just modify the print, the, the drawing.
Well, we would vote on it tonight and you would just have, have to satisfy whatever contingencies to meet the requirements. So we don't have the elevation here, we're, we're going to vote on assuming that the elevation is correct and that.
Do you need a print and elevation?
You'd have to give her.
Contour.
Give her.
You would have to get contour. A contour map.
The new size.
Contour?
You would have to show the contours of the property.
Okay.
And, and just show what the, what the height of this structure would be relative to the, the house and the road.
Okay.
Right, um, and obviously we have the distance to the well, you know, we're, we're understanding that it's going to be. Yep.
Right.
Not over the apples.
It can't be closer than ten feet.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that.
It would have to be able to specifically show uh at least a distance of that amount.
Right, from the well, to the edge, have a putt rate in the lines, twelve point two or fifteen, whatever it actually is, instead of the ten. So, what I would say, uh, that chairman uh would propose is to uh the structure be modified to thirty-six by thirty with plannings, uh, uh, plannings meaning trees or bushes to the roadside because he already has them to the tree side, uh, contingent on uh.
In front of the structure.
Yep, so contingent on everything going through the building, we would give the variance of five hundred and ten square feet needed. So. Okay, that's up to you.
No, no, I, I'm, I think we should vote on it.
Okay.
So I'm going to.
Make that.
So, so I think we're going to close the, well, we're going to do, 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 uh, close the.
Do we close the public hearing?
Okay.
Make a motion to close.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, second?
Mm-hmm.
We'll call.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all in favor?
Okay, motion to close public hearing, passes.
Passes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Now you, we may want to write down the words specific.
You would like to make a motion to modify the applicant's variance. A gross square foot area of two thousand two hundred and thirty square feet to a maximum of one thousand eighty square feet, correct?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
If you pose it that way, um, it would allow him to, to.
Move the structure, however, whatever size works.
As long as it, it doesn't cause him to be non-conforming.
Right, right.
Under the code and require more variances like set, side setbacks and rear setbacks, alright?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All, all adds, there's more than enough of the setbacks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we say uh thirty-six by thirty, but if it turns out to be the same number of square foot in a different, yeah, well, the square footage can be the same in a different arrangement.
A different, yes.
Yeah, that's all.
I, I think that thirty-six, um, I'm going to call it out, I don't think that thirty, but thirty-six would probably be fine.
Okay.
Alright, okay, so um so we're.
Motion to grant a variance to a thousand eighty gross square feet.
Like to make a motion to grant a variance to a structure that would be a thousand eighty square feet, gross square feet.
A thousand eighty or eleven eighty, what was that?
It was a thousand.
It was a thousand eighty.
A thousand, yeah, I wrote it down, I'm sorry.
Second. Because the house is eleven forty, so that would be bigger than the house.
Yes.
And, and to be clear, this is modifying the application.
Correct, make a motion to, to modify.
Um.
Well, you're going to deny, you're going to, you're basically denying their original request for the variance, area of variance sought and modifying it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, based upon your powers to do so with conditions.
Okay.
And that's a thousand eighty gross.
Thousand square feet.
For a variance of five hundred and ten square feet.
With, with with the conditions, with the following conditions, right, with the two conditions?
Well, I think, assuming it meets all other.
It meets all requirements under code section one fifty-five dash twenty-six accessory structures. And you're, you're going to want to add a condition that a new map or a proposed uh map be um submitted to the building department on his application for a uh, a building permit, so that these um, building department can make sure that there's no deviation from your uh variance.
Are we also um stipulating that this structure is going to be an accessory structure and won't be converted into a residential?
You can add that as a condition as well.
Yep, absolutely, okay. Alright, you ready to put it all through?
Did you write that down?
Yeah.
Did you?
Not all of it, no.
Alright, so first, your first motion.
First motion is.
Denied.
Um, no, to modify
Okay.
the applicant's request for variance to a um maximum square footage, gross square footage of one thousand eighty square feet.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to modify the applicant's request uh for variance for a structure that would be ten, oh, a thousand eighty square feet.
Maximum.
Maximum uh square feet.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Three here.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, and you can make a motion to include conditions.
Yep.
That the applicant follow uh code section one fifty-five dash twenty-six accessory structures.
So I'd like to make a motion that this, the proposed new structure meet the requirements of section one fifty-five dash twenty-six of the accessory structures.
That's a condition.
Second is a condition. Seconded.
Stella.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You're going to want to add a, you can consider a condition, additional condition, that directing the applicant to um obtain a new map, a new um site plan map that shows the location of the proposed improvement and compliance with one fifty, and showing compliance with one fifty-five dash twenty-six.
So I'd like to uh propose a requirement that the uh, the applicant submit an updated map uh showing the compliance with the requirements of section one fifty-five dash twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So that means that, just so the record's clear, there's new bulk area schedule that's going to be part of this map.
Right.
And it's going to have to show.
What about to keep that as an accessory?
The uh, the, the accessory structure cannot be within ten feet of operative septic tanks and/or leach fields. So what's shown on there is a well.
The water well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if we look at.
So we have the septic, it's on the other side, so it's quite a, quite a distance away.
Yeah, just have them draw a line to your septic saying how far the feet is from your, your new building to that septic.
And you'll, you'll want to have a measurement on the, on the plan of exactly what the distance is from the structure to the septic, from the structure to the well. Just saying, this is the distance and have a number there of what you're, you're proposing.
The well's okay.
Yeah, well.
Because it's not.
Septic, right.
A, a, a um consideration under the code.
Yep.
It's septic.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
But what is the, I mean, I'm sure that it's far, far enough away, it's farther than the house.
Right.
Right.
But what is, what is the distance?
Well, we don't know, there isn't, oh, there's ten feet.
What is the.
Ten feet.
From the septic?
From the septic leach field to the structure.
Okay, so that would be problematic.
Yeah, no.
Okay, and I think we said we're gonna like to consider a.
Contingencies with this.
Contingency that this structure will be used as an accessory structure and will not be converted into a living space.
Correct.
Where's you need a variance to do that? I mean, I just, I'm, I'm not looking, I need a place to put my stuff. I'm not looking to, you know, we own a small house for a reason, but would you need a variance to convert it to a.
You would have to go before the planning board.
Yeah.
To a different board.
It's not, it's not confused as a house, but I was.
You know how many people.
Wouldn't you need to go through deadlines, what are we going through now to do that?
But you know how many people will put up a barn, go through the process, you are put septic in, electric in it, and then pretty soon find out, hey, they got somebody living up there, you know, and, yeah, you know, that's what makes this process.
This is the way it is.
That's what makes this process so bad, somebody doing the process way before it got here trying to get around and get away with something, and it makes you guys have to jump through every little hoop, and that's, that's the hard part about it, you know. These, these rules all got here because somebody else doinked the system somewhere, you know, so.
You could just drive around in a circle.
No, I know, absolutely. So, that being said.
Contingent on living space, right?
Yes.
So, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Second contingency for the plantings to the roadside of the barn for sight, how would you say that, Craig?
You want, I'm looking for like vegetation.
Vegetation.
That would be a planting ground, right?
Yeah, just cover, no, we can put that contingency on, just so, yep, yep, just so that it helps the view, so when you're looking from the roadside, you see the house here and the shed here, and even though it, it's, can, it's still in the same size line of the house, you don't wanna see it as noticeable as a house, so a lot of times you put vegetation trees or hedges up in front, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but you'd have to actually.
State what you want.
Put on the map, what, what kinda hedges or what kinda sap.
I'm good if it's not there.
You can make your recommendation, it's a good recommendation, to be honest with you, so that it, it's not as visible from the roadside. It blends in with the neighborhood a bit, a little bit better, so.
Would you be okay if we just recommended and didn't force you to put any plantings up front, anything you could put up front to, you know, within.
Put that bush, that bush up sort of.
There you go. There you go, anything with fifteen to twenty foot of the front of it, you know, it's not intrusive on the front of your barn, but it kinda shields the view from the road, doesn't have to totally shield it, just something to break up the vision, that's all.
If you could show that on the map, that would be helpful to Jess.
To Jess.
That you're putting vegetation, they usually, the engineer or tech will put lines for vegetation and whatever you say you're putting there, you know.
But it's our recommendation, not a condition.
Yep, other than that, so then we agree that the, the variance that we're looking to give is for five hundred and ten square feet, right?
So the variance is granted.
Right, yes.
To a maximum gross square footage of ten eighty.
Ten eighty.
Which is a variance of five hundred and ten square feet under the code.
Okay, let's make that.
And I think, you know, you need to stress for the record that the, one of the major factors that in your decision making was the topography of this property, it's unique and that it slopes away from the roadside.
Absolutely.
Thereby making it less obvious to, you know, neighbors.
Right, to the area, it's in, right.
Of, of, making it appear smaller than it actually is.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
And, and a lot of that square footage is going to be hidden from the, from the road or from the, you know, property lines.
I think we, we, we passed all the different conditions we needed, right, voted on each individual one.
Yeah, you considered it at the last meeting too, so, but the, it is self-created, it's a self-created hardship.
Absolutely.
You know, they're, they're.
Right.
They want this size, so, but that's not the only factor, you know.
Right.
If you fail one of the five factors, you could still grant the variance, you can still grant the variance if they fail four out of five.
Right.
All right, as long as you do a balancing test.
Right, it generally is rule, what Craig's talking about when it comes to the, the balancing test and the five questions we ask, and one of the first questions, and everybody says no, is, is it a self-created hardship? But ninety percent of the time, and it, it is, only because if you brought the property and it was too small and decided you wanna do something else, it's pretty much self-created. Yeah, but, so, but there, there are very few things that don't make it self-created, and one of them's like problems with eminent domain and certain issues, but not that that, even if it is self-created, doesn't mean we have to deny it, right? And like Craig was saying, there could be four of the criteria, dependent to the degree and what they are and what's affected is still not in play, but in your area, what he's trying to stress and what we're trying to stress, because of the way the slope is from the road down and farther behind your property and the wood line is to the left of the property where the shed is going, it makes it such that the building doesn't appear to be as big as your house, it gets to be more hidden and not visible in that residential area, which is one of the reasons, you know, we would be, we, we have considered a smaller building, right, because generally as a rule, as soon as you see a number that big compared to the principal structure, it becomes a real, it's tough to get to that point, so.
If the property sloped up away from the road and was kind of behind your house, it would loom over your house, I mean, it would look like, you know, so that's.
We're joking around, I'm still, I'm still, I'm still kind of a little twisted about that, the farm behind us, but I'm sure you guys are more than.
Mm-hmm, you got a lot going on over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should hear on Sunday morning.
Oh, I know.
And I think there's actually another house that was either never there or that's pretty much right behind my neighbor's house, but I don't know if it was never there, but pretty much the last twenty-two years I never saw it, and now it has lights and it has music and it's always going on there.
Yeah.
So. So that, that rear property is a farm?
You know what, it was a horse farm and it had an NFA landing strip on it, and these people who lived, they clear cut sixty acres, they have put in a black top road, I already spoke to, and all the neighbors have made complaints, I got video of them actually with huge machinery, speaking of nicking a well and everything, it's in the ground, cutting down huge trees, mulching it, they said that it was gonna, they came, they came to the house whenever one was there, he spoke to them.
Are they still mulching?
They still make a lot of noise, they still got heavy machinery, they still got tractor-trails going in there, I mean, personally, I don't even know how they have built, you know, it's.
So they have ag status, and ag status basically, you know.
Put up multiple homes.
Well, it, well, just going back for a second to some of the things you mentioned about the machinery, it's a farm, so they're allowed to do, no, no, I'm saying from the perspective of New York State, it's a farm, so they're allowed to do a lot of things that normally you wouldn't be allowed to do if you didn't have farm status.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big part of what's going on there, but I, I definitely.
They have the trails from the down block though.
Yeah.
They also have the, the Soria right down.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Residential area, it's all farm status.
Yeah, if you, if you ever read through the regulations in zoning for ag in New York State.
I'm very interested, you guys are volunteers or you?
Yeah, we're volunteers, yep.
Well, if you need anybody, you vote it in or whatever it is, let me know, because I'm very interested, probably learned about this a little more four years ago instead of, instead of our house, let's do that.
Believe me, there's a lot of people that, that's why they buy the farms, you know, because of the different breaks and what they can do, yeah.
By, 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 we're known as, you're gonna be close to.
Yeah. Not to cut you off there, only because we unwrapped this part up here.
I just wanna make a, a note, because I don't think we went through the, the five criteria, for number three, is the variance substantial, and that's the original application, and it was.
It's very substantial.
It was extremely substantial, okay?
It's, it's still very substantial.
It's been taken care of, it is quite substantial, but certainly the original application for the number three, so we have a number three and a number five that are really, were really to be taken care of.
Tough ones to get past, sure.
Yep, yep, okay, we're fine now, but.
I think you considered the topog, the sloping topography that made it powerful.
Mitigated.
Mitigated, but it was still quite a.
And you granted the minimum variance necessary.
Okay, so I think we make a motion to close the meeting, like to.
Well, actually, you have one more matter.
What we have?
We have both, maybe scheduled for next year.
Oh, two firsts. So I, I think we're all set, so.
So we're, we're gonna.
You're good.
Throw this off, thirty by thirty-six.
Correct, you'll just wanna provide a new updated map that shows elevations, shows distances, right? And, and complies fully with the accessory structure code.
One fifty-five, twenty-six.
Yep.
Yeah. You could say the house is.
One fifty-five, yeah.
We have a copy.
Okay, here it is, you say the house is, they're hundred feet, I guess, the house.
Let me see if I have a.
He was actually just.
While we wait for that.
Yeah, now they're.
Do we wanna just move on to other business for a moment?
Yep.
So, like to propose adopting the twenty twenty-five zoning board of appeals meeting dates laid out in, in the agenda, so we have the meeting dates for each, each month and then submission deadlines.
Labelled out.
Yep.
Second.
Yep, obviously, January seventh is to give reading room after the holiday, that's perfect.
All in favor of New Year's?
Aye.
All in.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes.
You're good.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Let me just explain something to you after the meeting.
We, we just voted to adopt the dates.
Okay, so you made the motion, right?
I, I made the motion and Stella seconded and then we were unanimous.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Third?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.